Hey, Rob.
Can you hear me, Theron? Seeing if my camera goes on here.
Can you hear me?
I can. Are you able to hear me?
All right, I can't hear you. Let's see here.
Do you want me to try sharing my screen?
I can't hear you.
I know what it's like in Marshalltown this week, but my week is flying by.
Okay.
It is that.
So you should be able to share your screen. Hi, B. And Rob will have most of our school board. And then I invited our whole administrative team. So there'll probably be a large number of just building and district administrators on here. And then we're going to record it for those that are unable to to attend the session.
Perfect. Hopefully, my audio sounds crystal clear.
B, I tried to call you.
Yes. But you tried to call.
Call you at. Well, I had a message from Gabby to give you a call.
Yes.
So I can call you after the meeting.
Uh, let's talk tomorrow.
Okay. Hopefully, I'll have a less busy day tomorrow.
Hi, Megan.
Sean, you were able to run home in between meetings, huh?
I did. I got home between. Yep.
You didn't want me calling you Megan all night?
Not all night.
All right, then I won't.
Okay.
Darren just told me that the presentation is only going to be about 20 minutes long.
Okay.
No disagreement.
Is that fake news?
I don't believe in fake news. If I say it, it's fact.
I think we scheduled an hour. Not that Rob has to use all that time if he doesn't need to, but.
Who's ever in control of the Zoom settings could say 20 minutes, it's over.
The board meeting?
I've got 5:56. We don't have to formally call this into session, do we?
Yes.
Okay. So. Good.
So that means that you didn't look at the agenda. It'll take me about 10 seconds to call the meeting to order.
Rob, how's the weather in Kansas City?
That's it's not bad temperature wise, a little bit overcast, typical spring marsh day. So no complaints. We last week we had tornadoes that were kind of spitting out of the sky all around where I live. So.
Oh, really?
We'll take this, which is weird because it was like 40 degrees and normally you don't see tornadoes uh popping down like that. Nothing like what you guys had though a few years ago.
Well, B, do we want to go ahead and open the meeting?
Sure, we can. Call the meeting to order and turn it over to you. See, it took less than 10 seconds.
Well, it's my pleasure to introduce or reintroduce to many of our team, Rob Schwartz from RSP in Kansas City. Uh, Rob's been engaged with our district uh at least four to five years, all the years that I've been here for the purposes of creating an enrollment analysis for the district. And then we had Rob's team update that uh in 2018 on the heels of the tornado. And to try to better project what uh we might be looking at in the future. And then here we are again in 2021, uh post ratio, post pandemic almost. And uh we've asked him to recalibrate our enrollment projections and analysis in hopes of possibly gleaning some information uh relative to what we can expect in terms of enrollment as we move forward. And also the other thing that um kind of triggered the desire was knowing that the city has been in the process of uh zoning more properties, particularly on the south side of the community for future housing development and, you know, trying to get a feel for over time uh what we might need to be thinking about as it relates to school capacity and students and that sort of thing. So, Rob, I will turn it over to you.
Awesome. Thank you so much and good evening. Um, my focus this evening, there's quite a few slides here and I may not go over each of those slides. My my goal is to really set the framework to understand what the data is suggesting and why we're indicating enrollments is going to do something that maybe is a little bit different than what you thought might happen. And so the way in which we've categorized this is in these key components. Talk a little bit about enrollments, talk about some of those developments, opportunities. And then how does that then relate to enrollment projections? So that's kind of the key thing that we're going to try to get through tonight. Um, you heard the introduction already about RSP. We've done quite a bit of work in your community. So um people should be somewhat familiar with what we do. This slide here, I just really want to showcase the bottom part. We have used a lot of the data that's in your community. So whether it's from the county, the city, the school district. That is really the the baseline of understanding how things may look over the next five years is really digging into what that data means. Now, as we jump into this enrollment, I want to start at this 100,000 foot perspective. So we've categorized this three uh ways, one within moments. And we're indicating that there will be a slight enrollment increase over the next five years of about 80 students. And if you look at the elementary, we're we're seeing it grow by about 130 students, but we're showing the middle school will decrease by 170. And then the high school will increase by over 100. That'll make sense as we go through the data. This is really kind of that pig in the snake effect. I may have mentioned that the last time we had a meeting. So if you think about that pig being eaten by the snake, um, we're starting to see some larger grades move their way through the system as well as some smaller grades that are impacting your enrollments. We're also looking at your kindergarten moment of being between 340 and 380 students each year over the next five years. So I think that's a that's a big uh uh component when we come back to the next steps. We then utilize the capacity that the district provided for each of the buildings. And so I really do want to take just a moment to to hit on this. So at the elementary level, we have adequate district wide and by building, but we have some potential need for the dual language. Um, having a need for more than just what's available at Woodbury Elementary. We also are wanting to make sure that the south side residential growth that the city's planning that we're able to house those students in the buildings that serve the south side. And then we also have had some conversations in the past about Rogers Elementary being expanded to being a three section building. If you remember, we have these two um attendance areas um that don't have a building and the students get associated to one of the existing buildings in your district. And I'll come back to a little bit of that with the data that so how can we start to address some of these challenges that have been the same before? And then how does this now look with some of the enrollment changes? Um, we did update the capacity because the last time we did work with you, I'm at the intermediate in middle school, there were some changes to how um buildings were used. And I think there was even a small addition of some spaces. So now we're we're showing that Miller School is projected to be over capacity through 2223. And then it no longer has a capacity issue. Again, that goes back to that enrollment piece where we're seeing some smaller grade their way through. At the high school, well, projected to be over capacity from 2223 through 2526 with the reside. But because of the learning academy choice, um, we don't have high school capacity issues per se because those students are moving over into the learning academy, giving you more space at the high school. So that that's with capacity. If we talk a little bit about the developments, made your project interesting this go around was the last time we worked with you, it was right after the tornado. And so we were planning on what does that mean for that downtown area as we see redevelopments? Well, then we had the ratio here. And some of the things that we heard from the city was that kind of impact how much new development could occur just because of damage that was maybe to a lot of the existing building. So not as bad as the definitely may have been the impact on some of the building ability over the last year. Of course, we have COVID. We have to always mention COVID. It definitely impacted what we see with enrollments um for this particular school year. And I'm going to talk a little bit about um what that means with how we look forward with the projection when I get to the projections. Um, quite a few housing starts could occur um over the next five years and we'll we'll talk about that in a little bit. And we know most of the development is going to be on the south side, although I did hear the the Starbucks might now be open in the downtown area. So um, that's always fun to be able to have a coffee in your community. Um, so that's kind of the the general 100,000 foot view that I want you to understand is your enrollment stable, slight increases, um, capacity is manageable, but we do have to keep in mind that with the dual language need, um, we may need more space than what's at Woodbury Elementary. And then as we look at, do we have attendance areas um assigned for everybody to an actual building versus um the two attendance areas that get assigned to wherever space might be available? So as I move through, um, there's going to be visuals in this presentation. Um, take a moment just to talk you through what you see on most of the map visuals. We'll do an inset usually on the bottom left side of your entire district. And then for the larger part of the map, we'll zoom into Marshalltown. That's where the bulk of students are. Most of the changes that are occurring will be likely within the city limits of Marshalltown. So that's kind of the the overview of some of the maps. Um, and then depending on what we're showing, I'll kind of talk that through. So on this map, district boundary, solid color represents the city limit of Marshalltown. Um, we then have your existing attendance areas. And so the rural attendance area and the central attendance area, so this blue area and then the the brown area, which is all around um these other colors. Um, those students get assigned to one of the buildings because there's not a physical building in either of those two attendance areas. So again, just trying to give you some visuals. Um, when we look at your district, we break it down smaller than census blocks. We look at it with planning areas and those planning areas are defined as single family, mobile homes, duplexes, apartments. We're tracking it down at that level because we're able to understand what does that mean with enrollments, demographics, developments, and how does that play out over the next five years? We also can look backward and see what did that mean historically? Just to give you a visual of what that looks like, I'm here, we're by the intermediate school. You can see in satellite imagery. Um, you can see parcel lines that are in gray. I'm going to change something on my pointer options here. So you can see some gray lines. Those are the parcels. Dots represent students. The larger the dot, the older that student is. So this orange dot that I'm highlighting here, they're um an 11th grader. Um, the smaller dots get down into whether they're kindergarten, first grade, or so on. And this is just to give you a visual of how all this starts to play together. So when we look at how we do what we do with those planning areas, um, it is statistics, it's through regression. It's a sophisticated forecast model. Um, basically, all you need to understand with this is that it is math. It's more than just saying what trend data is. And that's important because with the tornado and with the ratio and with COVID, there's some things that we don't have any trend data to help understand what that might mean in the future. So we're relying on our statistical ability of seeing some of these variables work their way through those planning areas. Um, some of the information that goes into what we do is contained here on page 12. Really just want you to understand, we use a lot of different data sets to get at the conclusions that we're providing you for those enrollment projections. One thing that we spent a little bit more time on in this analysis was um live birth data. And so if we look at this particular visual for the physical calendar year, we see the number of live births that occurred in Marshall County, Iowa. Now, this could be, you may not have had your child born in Marshall County, but your permanent residence was in Marshall County. So that's how this number of live births gets associated to Marshall County. So we can see what those number of live births are. One thing that started to stand out is here in 2019, we have 479 live births. Um, that's the fewest number of live births that we have um going back. Well, shoot, even 2015, we're at 495, one of the fewest live births. So then what we started to correlate is typically five years later, what are the number of kindergartners that we have? So when we go to this column over here, we can see the number of kindergartners that were included in this um year. And this includes the transitional kindergarten students, I believe, in that number. So for this year, 343 students. What we're trying to get a sense of is what is our share that we can typically have of of kindergartners five years later with live birthday, knowing that many of these live births, um, they're probably not living in your community. They've moved somewhere else. But again, just trying to understand if we see this known metric and then we know what the number of kindergartners are five years later, what does that translate into us looking forward in the number of potential kindergartners? And so this is why when we have this 479 live verse, if we have this three year weighted average of these blue numbers, this potentially could be the number of kindergartners that we have in 2016, 17, 18, and 19. So this starts to set the stage. Um, what will we see more kindergartners or fewer kindergartners? That's one part of it. One thing that when we get to um some of these next slides, um, this slide here will kind of showcase this. What we were trying to look at with this COVID year, did we see families choose not to come into the system? And we see a similar number of kindergartners this year of 352 as what we've seen the previous two years. So this then started setting the stage in our um assumptions where that we're getting a similar share of kindergartners based on what we're getting for live births. That started to set the metric of when we move forward with the projections, what are the number of kindergartners we can expect? So on this particular table, we see the number of students by grade from 2000, 2001 through 2021. And then these last two columns, you can see where we've either increased or decreased. Decreases are in this red font with the negative in front of it. So you can see this year, we we lost 132 students. And how did that translate? Well, as we looked at really where we had our greatest loss was this preschool enrollment. So as I switch back to the previous one, we only had 173 pre-K students. Previous year was 218. So and then if you look in the previous years, we were over 200 students. So clearly in preschool, we have families likely choosing not to have their kids receive services. That makes sense. Saw that all across Iowa with the COVID effect. Then as we move forward, something that's, you know, we've seen this in other years, we've seen negative number of students cohort through. Um, in specific, if we go back to 1718 to 1819 with the tornado, um, we saw negatives from kindergarten all the way here through fifth grade. So that's something that's not atypical, but what we started to put together, and a lot of this is the benefit of doing your work so much later, um, here in the spring, um, we've learned a few things about what we're calling a recovery from COVID. So how many of these kids that we lost in any of these particular grades could we potentially recover going into the 2122 school year? So that's one of the things that we planned on in our projections. You'll hear that spoke about when we get to those projections. Um, some other things that we honed in on to understand what we might see for enrollments is specifically for the seventh graders, where we've naturally seen more students in seventh grade in your district um than they were as sixth graders. So we looked at what the St. Francis Catholic School enrollment is and what it historically has been here over the last five years. So that we can kind of anticipate, if we look at this year's third grade class for years, um, we might have more seventh graders um than what we typically have by maybe seven to 10 more students. So again, this is just starting to help us understand why we see some of those bumps when we see those bumps of enrollment. Another thing that our team put together was as we started to look at the demographics of the district. Um, you can see a graphic here, a person being one person representing 10% or or 10 people. What you can see is over time, the blue representing white persons, students in your district. You can see that's declined as we've gone from 2010, 11 through 2021. Whereas when we look at the Hispanic population, it's increased from 1011 to 2021. So again, just looking at how are things changing in your community and representing it in an interesting visual. As we looked at different things happening in your district, migration is always an important aspect, particularly with the tornado, with the ratio, and now COVID, where are we seeing some of the greatest change? So on this visual, we're showing the students that are new to the district in 2021, meaning they were not receiving the service last school year. And so the dots represent by grade level. Um, there's multiple dots on top of dots because of the map extent that we're at. So there might be an elementary student, um, an intermediate student, and high school student in one household, but you're only seeing one dot. Um, there's multiple dots in many of these instances. But again, just trying to see where are we seeing the change? Most of the students that were new to the district are actually on the north side of your district. And when we look at the bullet points, you can see that we've ranged from 300 to 370 new students over the last three school years. We look at the rest of migration, we're looking at on this map, the students that were receiving services last year, but not receiving services in this current school year. So again, the dots representing where those students were at. One thing that um was a little bit different this year that gave us this negative, which was similar to two years ago, is that we had fewer new students. So as I switch back, you can see from two years ago, we had 305 new students. This year, 304 new students. So that's pretty similar, right? And then when we look at the students that were not receiving services, very similar to two years ago. So that's why we have this overall net migration of a negative 51. So again, all of this goes back to the planning areas. Um, when we look at this particular visual, we're going back, um, I believe to 1516. And these planning areas are showing where we've seen change. Which really dynamic in this, you just focus on any part of the city, whether it's the north side or south side. Orange represents an increase, green represents a decrease. And the darker the orange, the greater the increase, the darker the green, the greater the decrease. What's so fascinating is that as you look at one particular area, it may be orange one year and then it switches to green and it might go dark green where there was a huge decrease. So all of these planning areas are changing at different rates and differently at each level, whether we're talking elementary, intermediate, middle school, or high school. So this is the value of why we try to look at the district with these planning areas. Um, another way in which we look at things is just geocoding those students. And this is a heat map. And where the darker red areas are, that's where the greatest density of students are. So clearly up um here on the north side of the district, um, that's where most of the students are. You can see that band of dark red. Um, it continues to be the greatest number of students um in that particular area. Um, if we come down to, um, I believe it's Haglen Elementary here on the south side. Um, you can see we get a little bit of some density that's here. And if we go down by Iowa Avenue, but nowhere near the number of students that we have on the north side. So again, just a visual to help you guys see some of the the intricacies of what's happening with choice and where families live and what that means for students. The next couple of slides really were for um Theron and his crew to just kind of understand what what is this whole intra-transfer impact specifically with the rural attendance area and the central attendance area and where those students are. So the dots on this map represent students that are going to a different elementary school than they would currently be residing in. Of course, central and rural, um, they're of course going to go to a building different than that because they have no building in those attendance areas. Another way to look at this data, um, we provide it in a a table. And so as you look on the left hand side, you'll see each of the attendance areas based on where a student can reside. And then as you go across on that row, you can see where they actually attended. So when I look at Anson Elementary, we can see we had 27 at Fisher, nine at Franklin, 20 at Hoagland, three at Rogers, and 34 at Woodbury. Of course, we know Woodbury is the dual language. So as we come down that column, you can see we have 219 kiddos that are coming to Woodbury, most likely. And I told Most likely, and I told Theron, if we had some more data variables associated to what we received, we'd really be able to isolate. What is the percentage of these students actually receiving the dual language? Our assumption is they're probably going there because that's where those programs are. Allocated. So again, just another way of looking at some of the things that are happening with your students and where they attend buildings. Won't read all of these ball points. This is something that you kind of heard me talk a little bit about on each of these slides. You can come back to this slide for that understanding of enrollment. As we move into developments, the one visual that I try to start everyone off with. Is trying to show a comparison of three variables. The certificate of occupancy, which is the blue line. And the enrollment change or enrollment increase is the red line. And then population for the district is the green line. What I'm trying to understand is, are we first seeing building activity? So when we look across the table, you can see we've had building activity in this last year. We had a hundred units that came online. In your district. We look at the green line, we can see that they're indicating census data is indicating you actually have. Fewer people living in your district than what were there, let's say, five years ago, just slightly. Basically, they're saying less than ten people are leaving the community. Giving you a less people in your your district. If we look at the red lined, which is your students enrollment, you can see it's like a. Roller coaster goes up and down, up and down. So there's something that's happening more than what we're seeing with building activity. It's really related to the existing housing inventory. What affordable rates are, what households are moving in? Do they have kids? Are they waiting longer to have kids? So that's why we had to look at some of the other census data sets. Fortunately, the there's been a delay in the twenty twenty decennial census data to be pushed out. So we had to use some of the other demographic data sets that we've utilized in other districts throughout Iowa. To understand some of that stuff. We also started to look at these yield rates of kids. So I mentioned we have these planning areas. So one of the advantages of planning areas, we can understand by the type of development. What yield are we getting out of each of the attendance areas? So here we have each of the attendance areas listed and for preschool through fourth grade. If I look at this bottom row, this point one eight would be every unit of single family would get you point one eight students. Well, we know we get whole numbers for students, right? So if I think about this from one hundred units, we get eighteen pre-K for students for every one hundred units back in two thousand eight. You can see it went up a little bit here in the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. But here in twenty twenty, we're back to eighteen. Pre-K for students for every one hundred units. And we've built about a hundred new single-family units in this same time period. We isolate this with multifamily, which is everything that's not single-family. So this would be mobile homes, duplexes, townhomes, apartments. What we can see here is we actually were having almost as many kids for every one hundred units. In two thousand eight, we were getting thirteen for every one hundred multifamily units. And you can see that it has decreased here in twenty twenty to about ten for every one hundred units. And you can see we added about two hundred multifamily units in the same time period. Can just helping you guys understand where these kids are, where are we potentially seeing them? Is it multifamily? Is it single-family? And it's predominantly going to be single-family areas that we see the majority of students. We did look at median home values from the county level. And applied that to these two hundred planning areas. Blue is the most affordable. As we get out to some of the newer developments, they become the least affordable areas. And that seems to reason that's everywhere in Iowa we work. That's typically the case. Again, looking at where we were seeing the building activity, the dots you can see. Are basically around Merle Hibs Boulevard. If we go back. East of the Walmarts. Specifically around Hoagland Elementary. And you can see we have all of the different dots. That's where a lot of the building activity occurs. If we look at this inset, you can see there's some units that are being built out in the unincorporated area. But not nearly as many as what we potentially see within the city limits. So from all the information that we gleaned from the city and the county. We created the potential of what could develop. So green is the areas that are developing or the city indicated could start seeing dirt move on this year. So you can see there's multiple areas and the majority of it is going to be south of Lynn Creek. There are some areas that are up in the core part of your city limits. But most of it's going to be on the south side. Yellow are areas that potentially could occur in the next five years and the purple further out. I showed that in this area, even though we project only five years. We want you to know that some of these areas, they may go faster or slower depending on what the markets trends are. And if the people who own that land, do they want to develop it? How easy is it for them to connect into the existing infrastructure? It's going to just a visual to understand how we model. Here's a table that then breaks down those particular developments, development types. So is it single families, it mixed use, multifamily? What growth area category we gave it? The existing units that are in that development and then the potential units that could get built. What this helps you understand is for current growth areas, we have about three hundred units that are available right now. In the next five years, we could add another three fifty. And then over the next ten years, an additional two fifty. So we're at about nine hundred potential units. This could grow quite a bit more based on, again, who's selling the land and is there a market? But this again, just gives you an understanding of how we tried to break your district down. So it all makes a little bit of sense when we get to the projections. So again, I mentioned most of these bullet points. About what's happening with specific developments. I think one of the items that I thought was interesting is the the relocation of some of the medical facilities. On the south side, that may result in some sort of redevelopment with the existing location. That's yet to be determined. And that's going to be depending on, you know, what does the the hospital do with that space or that land? So that's kind of in general what we're seeing with developments. So transition into the projections. This is what this looks like. So past enrollments for your pre-K four is going to be the primary red. For the middle school grades, so the intermediate, middle school, fifth through eight is going to be the primary blue. And then the high school nine through twelfth is the green. And then the purple line on the top is the lead of all three. Our likely RSP projection, the elementary is going to be that pastel pink. The middle school is the light blue and the high school is the light green. What we've shown, so if we start here in nineteen twenty, we were at about five thousand one hundred sixty kids. This year, we dropped down to about five thousand students. We're showing that we're going to have a little bit of recovery in twenty-one twenty-two. Above fifty-one hundreds. And then we're going to continue to have a stable enrollments. Where we're at about that fifty-one twenty, fifty-one forty students. And then you can see it starts to drop a little bit. If I isolate, here's some good news in this. So we have a stable enrollment. That's that's the first good news. The second good news is. That we're seeing more elementary students potentially over the next five years. Where we get back to a number that's similar to what we had here in two thousand fifteen and sixteen. If you go back to what I think was page eight or page nine, the enrollment by grade. You start to understand why we just are going to see a decrease in the middle school. Some of the smaller grades work their way into the middle school. And we probably about bottom out here in the twenty-four, twenty-five. Twenty-six school year. And then we should start seeing that enrollment beyond this projection start to come back up. What then starts to happen is these smaller grades start to hit the high school. And so that high school enrollment should start to decrease a little bit when we get past twenty-five, twenty-six. So there's some different things that we've spoke about with Theron that we have to look at. First is the number of kids and how they move through your system. And what that capacity is for buildings at each of those levels. But then that ancillary level of the type of kids and the programs they need. How are those able to be utilized? Whether it's at Woodbury or if those programs need to be expanded someplace else. How do you make that transition? So that's kind of that hundred thousand foot as we look at these numbers. We do provide the projections broken out by building. And I'll explain some of this information that you see on this table as I go to that table. And so we have each of the buildings listed here on the left-hand side. And the capacity, and you'll notice obviously central has a zero capacity, rural has a zero capacity because there's no building. Those kids get assigned to one of the other elementary attendance areas. Then as we move to the right from seventeen eighteen through twenty twenty-one, we showed the enrollment three ways. So based on reside, so we know where the student lives and how that relates to the attendance areas. So that's the middle row, blue fonts. Then we know with the student data the district provided, we know the number of students for those grades that attended that building. So that's the bottom row for each school, the green font. The top row for each building is a subset of the reside. So do they actually reside in that attendance area and actually attend? So we'll just do a quick look. What what does this mean? So central, well, we have two hundred forty-six kids that reside there. Well, obviously, none of them can reside and attend that building because there's no building, right? So we have zero there and we have zero also in the attend. If we look at Anson Elementary, we had two hundred four that reside here. We ended up having two ninety-two, so a positive flow of about eighty-eight kids, right? Well, it's actually more than that because we only had a hundred and eleven of the two hundred four actually reside in attend. So we had what almost almost two hundred kids. Move from one of the other buildings into Anson Elementary. So quite a bit of flow. Some of this, as we spoke about in our meeting with Theron, is just related to central and this rural attendance area where there's. Literally no building, right? We're assigning them to some sort of building. The other impact is programming. When we start to look at the dual language at Woodbury, if you go back to that table I showed you, we have a lot of kids that are moving. Into that building because they need the services that are provided there. So that's that's the historical enrollment. As we move to what we're projecting, we show it two different ways. So first by the reside. And so that kind of makes sense because we have all of these attendance areas. But we also wanted to show you, well, what could this possibly look like? As students are moved around to any of these buildings specifically for central and the rural areas. And we also have to acknowledge the administration and the principals, you guys have a lot of control on that. So the way these numbers play out in the attend in these buildings. This could be a little bit different because you ultimately get to say, yes, this student is able to go here or no, they're not able to go here. Some of it probably dictated by class size. And trying to have some sort of balance could also be with where programs are. So this just kind of gives you an understanding if we look at currently how things are working, if this translates forward. This is the number of students that we could have attending there. This is something different. I don't think we provided that in that way to you on our last assessment from three years ago. So again, trying to give you a tool to see how this all works. So this is the elementary buildings. When we get to the intermediate, middle school and high school buildings, you start to see some orange shading. And that's where it's over that school capacity. And this is where I started out with that hundred thousand foot view. We have the intermediate where they've had an issue back in nineteen twenty. But you can see the enrollments steadily come down here this current school year, and it goes down a little bit more over the next five years. You can see the middle, the middle school, we have had issues the last two school years. And that's projected to continue for the next two school years. And then we come back under that eight hundred capacity. And then when we look at the high school, initially without the learning academy, we're over capacity at the high school. And then you can see when we look at the learning academy with the roughly hundred students. That may elect to go to that that building. That provides us the relief at the high school. So that's kind of in general, when we look at this by buildings. Again, you can see at the elementary level. One of the questions that came up, I know three years ago, Theron and I spoke about this as well as. Well, do we plan for a south side elementary building? And so not telling you you should or shouldn't, but if I just look at numbers. We have two thousand five hundred fifty capacity. And that may change as you look at things with this post-COVID on other spaces you want to utilize in those buildings. Maybe you want more mental health, maybe you need more breakout spaces or whatnot. But right now it's defined as two thousand five hundred fifty students capacity. You can see if we're at about two thousand students, we have quite a bit of available elementary capacity, the way it's currently defined. We look at the middle school, which is going to include the intermediate and Miller. We have six hundred capacity, sixteen hundred capacity. And we're steadily going down a little bit where we're between fourteen hundred and fifteen hundred students. So a little bit of breathing space there. And then you can see. Both buildings, we're right near that seventeen hundred capacity as we move forward in these next five school years. I do give a breakdown by building by grade of what this could be, and this is the resides. All of this will total back to on those previous pages. And then the same thing with attend. So again, trying to leave Theron and his crew with some more resources. As you try to deliberate, you know, what potentially are class sizes? How many teachers do we need in each of these grades? So that you can have some equity in what that may look like, maybe another tool to to better make some of these decisions. Really moving forward. What I want to highlight are really three things. That are either directly contained on this page or things that that you want to consider as as you think about things. The first is going to be related to enrollments. And thinking about what your kindergarten roundup is and what that number could be. For instance, when we think of COVID, if some parents did elect to keep their kids from kindergarten. Will they come in as first graders or will they come in as kindergartners? So that's the first part of this. The second is with developments, looking at things. How fast do we see some of the buildings that come online? Are they going to be affordable rates units? Do we see them be more towards elderly or fifty-five and older? So we want to watch those things with the city. And as I'm looking at my chat with the preschool numbers, they don't include the partners. These are just the preschool students that are physically in your buildings that would be associated. In any of the tables or information that we have on ours. So there are more preschool students that would be with your partners. So that that's with enrollment with building. But then the third thing comes into midway down this page. Is based on things that you're looking at on how each of these buildings are operating. With the capacity or with the programs that are in there. Do we have to look at central and rural attendance area? In a way that we assign them specifically to an attendance area that physically has a building? Are we at that point? There's some challenges with that. Basically, with most of the students being north of Lynn Creek. And some of the facilities being on the south side. That creates a little bit of challenges. How do we create those boundaries? But we most certainly can look at that. The other is with the high school being so close in capacity. How do we, is there enough available capacity? Or with COVID in the way things maybe pivot with more virtual experiences and how that can work in a pinch? Do you look at high school capacity a little bit different? You see, those were the highlights for the next steps, trying to look at some of the other questions. How do OE in and out numbers get represented here? I think I'm back. I think my volume is getting muted. I'm muted. But I don't know what OE means. I don't want to make an assumption on that. So if someone can tell me what OE is.
Open enrollment.
Open enrollment. All right, great. So how does open enrollment in our numbers get represented? That's a great thing. Those are in the the numbers. What we've done is we've categorized in all the past years, students that don't live in the district. But are enrolled into your district. There are non-geographic planning areas, so we're monitoring those number of kids. They are non-geographic planning areas, so we're monitoring those number of kids. And so we've built a model specific to really a lot of the trend choices for students that don't live in the district to come in. Now, the other aspect of this is those that might be in your district and they decide to open enroll somewhere else. The good thing is with our data, we don't know who those students are. So we're forecasting what the likely markets attraction of students would be into your district. So that I can open up for other questions or comments or if there were surprises to what you guys saw in this information.
I don't know if there were surprises, but I taught at Miller when we were over eight hundred students before. And that's a concern. Because when you have the overcrowding at the middle school, your behavior issues go up. So it's something to think about. Maybe we can use our virtual school options or something to relieve that. It's just something to be thinking in the back of the head.
Well, I think one of the good things, if there is a good thing with the COVID is that our higher numbers of families that are choosing to want to go virtual are from the middle school and high school. So that should provide a little bit of relief from what they otherwise would have if that continues to hold true.
It's also helpful. It's about the same number in each grade. So you could even maybe do a, you know, if, if you wanted kids to be there for the classes where they really need to be, their family consumer science and band, you could maybe do a half day virtual, then half day at the building and spread it out. I don't know. It's just something I'm thinking about. But you're right. It really did kind of help with COVID that we know that those kids can do virtual.
Well, and I'm just saying of those families that are self choosing at this point to remain virtual or preponderance or at the secondary level. And we still don't have a strong handle on total numbers. But that should help us where our largest classes are in the immediate future.
So if, if a key metric of financial health is student enrollment and this projection solves student enrollment sort of flat over the next five years. Theron, what does that tell you that we ought to be doing?
Well, that's a good sign that it's stable. You want it stable or growing. And so that's good news as far as financial stability.
So in the years, Theron, that we've been in the best shape, I think, or there, when I've been on the school board is when we increased by ninety or a hundred students. And each one of those is worth seven thousand bucks. And so you're, you know, your, your budget goes up by half a million dollars in a year. Isn't that what we want?
Well, ideally, yes, but when that's happened, it's always balanced out a similar decrease the year before. So you know, what's going to be really interesting is going to see where the next school year is. What I've talked to Rob about is, you know, unlike the recovery that we experienced with the tornado where, you know, we were down and then we bounced back even better than we would have otherwise been the next year. I'm not hundred percent sure if the COVID bounce back will be in the same fashion. I think it potentially could take a couple of years, you know, in order to get it all back. And again, I mean, these are projections. There's a certain amount of unknown due to deracial impact, pandemic impact and, and that sort of get things. So I don't know if Rob, you want to speak to that anymore or not?
Maybe not.
Rob, are you talking?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I actually have two mute buttons. So I mentioned the live birth data initially because that's a huge indicator of what we may see for kindergarten students. The other thing that we have to overcome is what's naturally happening in your district. When I look at this senior class, so last year's four hundred students are replaced by three hundred fifty two coming in. So we naturally lose fifty kids. So in this particular example, so if we have larger senior classes, smaller incoming kindergarten, we have to make up that loss another way. And that's where on page fifteen, when we look at that cohort change through, we've really relied a lot on those sixth to seventh grade. Those kids coming in, when we pick up, I mean, look at this, some years thirty plus students. Well, this year in that grade, we only got one student. So that's, that's the COVID effect. So this starts to make up some of the loss that we naturally see with a larger senior class, smaller incoming kindergarten class. But then we have to try to make up some more of that. We see a little bit of that from fifth to sixth in past years. So we usually can make up that through some of the cohort changes. But with COVID this year, it just decimated. We had large senior class graduating, small incoming kindergarten class. And we saw fewer preschoolers. And we saw fewer kids in some of these early elementary grades that we think maybe are still living in your community. And we should be able to recover some of them. In my model, I've had it that some of this, not so much from kindergarten to first because we do have a statistical propensity where many of those years we do decrease. But we did try to get some, some of these students back in our projection. About fifty percent is where it kind of started to target it when we were modeling it. So that's the key thing to watch is can we get more of those kids? And can we see a bounce where if we look at this column here? In eighteen nineteen, actually we'll go back seventeen eighteen, we grew by ninety. And the next year we lost eighty five, then we came back and grew by eighty four. And then this year we lost a hundred thirty two. So it's this leapfrog effect, right? And so if we can get more continuity with our enrollment where it's just not swinging positive, negative, positive, negative, I think that would be an ideal outcome that really helps you financially. Kind of a long answer, but as we look at the numbers, those are the things that I see.
And I think
There was a question on the chat.
Well, I think the other thing too, that we have to continue to always be cognizant of is where those lower numbers are and, you know, massaging the staffing levels to address it. Generally speaking, when we're in these, this kind of circumstance, we can usually manage that well through attrition and repurposing F T E to different grade levels in order to accommodate it. The last couple of years, we've had some reduced sections, I think like Hoagland. Yeah, we, you know, we went from some larger sections of four back down to three at a couple of buildings. So we just have to, you know, pay very careful attention to that as far as the sections go. It's a little bit more challenging at the secondary level just because of the nature of their structure and schedules and such. But, but it's a good sign if overall our numbers are going to stay relatively flat. That's a lot better than being projected to be on a steady decrease.
Yeah. And Theron, do you want me to, as I look at the chat, like shout out some of these questions? And if there's answers or how do you want to address that?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So I think we had, we talked about open enrollment. We did mention about the central zone attendance area. Does that still service well? I think that's something that there's probably a future conversation about. I don't have a specific answer there. A comment about children that are coming into the country from south of the border. What impact does that have here? Not really, no. I do know that there's going to be some changes in what populations are throughout the United States. And we've tried to factor in some of that growth is limited by the housing inventory, right? So if we don't have a lot of new housing inventory, we're kind of constricted unless there's people that are moving into your community that are willing to have more people per households than what we're typically seeing. That's why we try to tie our information back to those planning areas that we can kind of get a sense of number of students. You can see over the last five years that we showed that data, I'm pretty similar yield rates. In fact, it's gone down a little bit and may go up if we see a younger age demographic coming in here. I think there was a mention about losing the O G B Y N clinic. Well, all that might do is instead of actually being born in your community with those that would have gone to that clinic, they're going to go someplace else for it. But as far as my live birth data, since it's tied to where their residence is, whether they're born in Marshalltown or in the county is irrelevant. It's more about where their physical address is. And that's why we've tried to use that data because we know some of these things are changing. And I think will change even more with hospitals moving forward with the COVID impact. So that shouldn't be too much of impact there. Then I think we had another comment about ninety percent of incoming preschool and kindergarten are I W N's born here, raised here. It's a fallacy that these kids are immigrants because they're Hispanic. I would agree. Hopefully, anything that I've said here, it's, it's been more about just, hey, we have kids coming here. And some of these kids have different needs and the district's trying to provide that precisely with Woodbury Elementary with that dual language. I think that was all the comments, questions. Oh, I answered them at least. If I didn't, if Theron, if you have to jump in and answer more on that, you can. I just kind of going off the cuff of what you guys typed in there.
Well, I'll reiterate what you already mentioned about the central and rural zones. We did take a concerted look at that. I think it was in conjunction with the last time that you provided the enrollment projections. And there, there were no easy and clean answers to how we would repurpose what we're doing to specifically identify those kids to a particular school. So we just need to continue to, to look at that and, and see if something changes as a result of new housing development. You know, relocation of kids from one place to another in terms of where they live, that sort of thing. As you said, we have plenty of capacity within the district in our elementary schools to house the students and to facilitate their education. It's just not necessarily in the most convenient spot. So, and as far as the O B G Y N, a big portion of the reason why we'd lost those services is because when we had them, people were self choosing not to use them and to go other places in order to have their babies anyway. And even though that was a tough change for Marshalltown, it was not an unusual change that's been happening across the state and country with those services becoming more regionalized versus, you know, within each and every community.
Hey, Theron and Robert, the live birth data that you shared, Robert, was very interesting. And you seem to indicate that we have detail of this live birth data down to the address that, you know, the parents who had a kid. And so if that's, if I interpreted that right, let me know. And secondly, if we have that data, can we market directly to those families for the first, first three to five years of life to try and make sure that they choose our school district versus another?
All right. Good, good question. A clarifier on the data is we don't have the actual address. We just have the number of live births that occurred in Marshall County. And so we, I wish we had it by address. I know they have it at some sort of central repository where we have that. But probably because of, of the sensitivity of that information, we just can have it at best a zip code. In this case, where we extracted it, it was at the county level. So that was, I think that answered one of your things about the data. You had another point.
Oh, that, that, that answered the second point too.
Good.
At what grade level does our dual language start? Is it starting at kindergarten?
Yes.
That's, that's a fairly popular program. Would we get more participation if we dropped it down, started a preschool? That might be a marketing strategy.
We'd have to have a bilingual preschool teacher to do that.
Again, it's just something to think about. It's, this is not private place to make a decision. But I was thinking about what Mike said, if you got kids involved in that program, that would probably keep them in the district.
Well, and I think another question is at what point do we try to assess and determine whether it would be warranted to maybe have two buildings facilitate dual language to elementars?
Especially if we're looking at expanding Rogers because then we might be have the space for it.
Well, and again, the challenge there is by expanding Rogers, you could potentially accommodate a lot more Rogers resident students attending there. But you're going to have available space. You're going to open up more space somewhere else as a result of doing that. Because we have the capacity across the district, more than enough capacity to accommodate our kids. It's just not where vast majority of the kids live, which is on the north side of town at this time. Any other questions or comments? Rob, I want to thank you for your time this evening and for this very interesting information.
Absolutely. We appreciate being able to continue to have this partnership. And if there's questions as you, the board, work your way through this, just push them to Theron and, and we'll be happy to try to answer those questions as best we can. It is kind of exciting when you think about the unknown of this next year. There's a lot of uncertainty, but hopefully this information at least gives you kind of a little bit of a blueprint of where it possibly could go and some benchmarks in which if they go higher or lower, you'll have a comfort level of, are we tracking in a particular way? So again, we really appreciate this opportunity.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
McGinnis Heitman, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll assume there were five board people there replying aye. Good evening.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.